So we're gonna start at seven. Wendy, nice to have you on board. Good to see you again. Going through the agenda. We'll work through the items in order, except I did wanna move Ann's request up to the the sixth item, if you will. She had sent something about from the town clerk getting back to them about the special town meeting, whether we're doing a report or not. And and we can have a discussion and it's good that Wendy is here. That would be very helpful for her point of view since we've nominated.
Everybody have the agenda up?
Yes, yeah, the agenda's up. Looks good. So let's go to item number one, parks and rec memo, which as Ray said last time, hopefully is just listed some boilerplate so some stuff that we had noticed when we were going through the site plan review. So Chris, do you wanna go through this with us or what are you looking for from us?
It's pretty self-explanatory. This was an agenda item that we discussed at an earlier meeting and we decided to place it at a later date. And what you have here are two items. One is a helpful memo provided by the town manager about some of the background regarding Camet Park. Some of the planning efforts and the ongoing review of everything that's been going on down there. So that's good context and background. And then the second item is the memo talking points I've received to date from Brian and Rob. Would you like me to click on those?
Yeah, I would look at those. And then again, yeah, thanks for Angus bringing us up to speed. They, to me, the lead was buried, the lead being that as of right now, there hadn't been anything queued up about a review of Camet Field by, you know, comprehensive review or whatnot. But that, that, that to me remains one of the key elements I think we had all discussed. So Chris, how would you want to put together this memo so we can get it done and out?
Well, I see here from Brian, some and from you, Rob, some very helpful bullets. And the bullets are a nice format to make everything concise. It covers everything. I like memos with bullets in them, just, you know, to get right to the point. And and I believe we should just put this in memo form, you know, with the the planning board template. And then Anne, when she comes back, she can sign it and we'll submit it to Park and Rec or whoever wants to review it. So to me.
Does that sound good with everybody?
Well, I, I, yeah, let's, let's just make this nice and concise. I mean.
Right. Don't, don't, don't use my words. You use, use better words. Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to add anything, I guess that's the one thing I would ask of the board now, but it's pretty comprehensive here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have Adam showing up now or what?
The, the memo, it, it should not reference to board members. It needs, you know, it just needs to be from the planning board.
Yeah.
No, we'll take that out. But yeah, that was just for to make sure we know who contributed what for discussion.
Yeah.
But.
Like, and, and we wouldn't have two comments about the parking. I think Rob feeds right into what I said. So one of those can get axed. Right?
Yep.
And I think, I think the language could be even simpler, just distill it.
Yep.
You know, that, that, that we believe it's in the best interest to pave and and line the parking lot by Action Co.
So again, what Chris recommended was getting this written, get it in front of Anne so that he and Anne could Yeah. get, send it out. I, you know, you've worked long enough with Anne. You know, she's gonna probably take up everything that we can think of.
Yeah, I know. I gotta tell you, I, I thought, I thought that was being done for this meeting. Did, did, did I, was I under the wrong assumption here?
What we need to do is take your input and put it in the form that Anne will sign. And that's where we are. So.
That's what we had discussed and that's what it would be nice to agree to tonight. It's goodbye me. I, I, I trust Chris. I trust Anne.
All right.
And it's just, it, it really is a memo. You can see Brian that, that every point is there. And we have a town planner that can.
Yes, it is.
Read better.
It's, it's just, yeah.
I'm not gonna change it. It looks pretty good and to the point, which is the important thing. As long as it covers the essence of what you want to communicate, and it looks like it does.
Yeah.
From what I'm hearing. We'll get it in memo form and get it out. That's, yeah.
Yeah, Chris, can you just scroll up? I don't understand Rob's comment about the town of Hope Dale. Do we?
No, no, no. Again, to Ray's point, th- this should not go out exactly as written. But that was an example of what someone might wanna look to for town that did do a major review based upon studying a park that had been in existence and well-used for seventy-five years. That's all of it. I, I, again, this was not, my, my thoughts weren't to be the memo thoughts. They were to be communication between us.
But I, but I just heard Chris say, these are good bullet points. And, and I, I, I want, I want to be clear.
Yes.
That there were certain things in here that shouldn't be included.
Right. Clean it up. Make it concise.
Let me know what those are. Well, for me. First of all, is a little.
I, I can, I can tell you ju- just for me right now. I'm picturing a very simple memo, maybe half a page. And the only two bullet points that matter to me are that I believe that a, a safe, accessible path should be created between the Snack Shack parking lot and the Action Co parking lot. And I believe that it would be prudent, in the town's best interest, to pave and stripe the parking lot by Action Co. Those are the two bullet items that matter to me. And I don't mind additional bullet items if, if Anne and Chris, if you guys get together and think that some of these other items are appropriate for this memo, that's fine with me. I trust your judgment.
All right, that sounds good. Yeah, that's exactly what I need. So unless there's anything else missing.
No.
Then I think we have the basis.
Nothing missing. And, and again, you got the sense from Brian and from Ray how to make it read shorter and better.
Yes. I think we're good. Thank you.
Are, are we agreed to this and we can go on to the next item?
I'm good.
I have nothing to add. Sorry.
Good. Thank you, Deb. So we're going on to the next item, visioning scope of work draft. Chris, again, I would ask you to maybe give us some context to this or?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair. So this is one of the priorities that the select board or the town manager have identified. And we talked about it before. So it is a major priority in the 2026 work plan. And this relates to an appropriation by town meeting of forty-five thousand dollars for a visioning product.
Are we supposed to be looking at something here, Chris? I got, I, I see an MS four.
There, there isn't anything because, and I can skip ahead to the, to the back and say, Anne wants us to hold off on discussion of this item so that she can be involved. She thinks it's, it's important for the full membership to talk about it. She has some ideas. I talked to Rob. So I would suggest that we just continue this item until the next meeting when she'll be there. But if any of the board members at any time have any input or thoughts, and you know, I welcome them at any time. And in your staff report, you have some background in an actual very early rough draft. So that is provided to you. Just.
Questions on that. So.
Yeah, so it's, just to get the ball rolling here. But Anne had requested that we sort of review this as a full body. So that's my recommendation now. That's why there's nothing in the packet.
Yeah, well, I, I hear you. I, I, I think it's on the agenda and we can talk about it and we'll certainly talk about it with Anne. I was surprised, it seemed as if the, the, the scope was fairly extensive for forty-five thousand dollars. What, what's your opinion on that, Chris?
It is. But, you know, that's the process by which we sort of narrow down and, you know, sort of make the thing more concrete. And decide upon, you know, a final version that we want to advertise to get a consultant on board. So I start big. And then, like any editorial process, you just remove what isn't necessary or the board doesn't think should be included. We got forty-five thousand dollars here and it was not well-defined in terms of what town meeting appropriated. So it's a blank slate. But this, this, this covers all the things I think you could want in it. And so by process of elimination, you can just take out what you don't think you.
So, so if we're going to discuss this at a future meeting, which obviously we are, and, and for good reason, because it's probably not going to be just one future meeting. It would be really good if everybody's gone through this. I'm, I'm wondering if everybody sitting here has actually gone through that section of the staff report, Chris's staff report.
I, I did go through it and, and it led me to. I mean, I, 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 it, it looked very extensive. And that, that's why I said I'm not, I don't know where the, you know, how, how the money versus the desire. Or do we just put this out there and see what comes back?
Could this be in the marketplace dump for forty-five? Yes. Yeah, I wouldn't waste anyone's time with something that's not practical. So with that amount of money, you could cover you know, most of these, these items in this scope.
No, so that's what I'm saying. You, you, you're comfortable that we should have some people, you know, interested at that price.
At, at, at that scope. Definitely. Based on my experience, definitely.
Okay. Good.
Chris, I had a question. It makes reference to the project planner. Who is the project planner?
That I guess remains to be seen, but.
Is that, is that a consultant outside or is that a internal staff member?
Usually, project planner is the person on behalf of the town that's managing.
And who would that be?
Consultant. So it could be. In my experience, it's been the town planner or the planning director. My role, I'm usually been planning director and that's what I've done.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. So th- this has a great deal of emphasis towards helping define the balance of the concert comprehensive report after that happens. So, so this whole visioning scope, including the build-out, will help inform the comprehensive plan that we, I guess subsequently will attempt to get funding for. Is that correct?
Yes. Keep in mind, a comprehensive plan always has a visioning section upfront.
Right, right.
And but the visioning product does not always come with a whole comprehensive plan. But, you know, the plan is to then take this as the basis for updating the comprehensive plan. So yes, you want to think in terms of how this will fit into that larger project and sort of drive it. It's the vision is the central, you know, part of the comprehensive plan that consistency should flow from in terms of goals, objectives, and then even action items in the implementation chapter at the end. So you, you, you can't have a comprehensive plan with, this is an unusual process we're undertaking. It's usually not done this way. The whole thing usually is done together. But here, you know, we're gonna do that and then that's gonna lead to the comprehensive plan. So, you know.
My point, my point is, my point is that this helps establish something of the nature of the comprehensive report itself. The visioning is really important to that. It's a good first step. I don't think you can have visioning without the build-out, which luckily we're able to get done within this. It also serves as a process that would give background for the consultant. So the thing I wanted to ask about that is in town, what we've been doing is finding that we, and Wendy can speak to this a little bit better than I can, but it seems to me that we have found the ability to continue to use similar consultants for consecutive projects. I, my only concern about the visioning scope being outside the comprehensive report, report itself is once you've gotten a consultant on board that deals with visioning scope, the ideal set of circumstances is that consultant proves themselves worthy of doing the comprehensive report. But I don't know how procurement goes in this regard. Maybe Wendy does. Or maybe you do, Chris.
Ray has his hand up.
Yeah, so Ray wants to speak. Go ahead.
You're muted, Ray.
Unmute.
Yeah, Archie was barking, so that's why I'm muted. If, if you'll indulge an old professor, a, a plan is the means to accomplish a goal. And I think everybody understands what the goal is. But I, I think that's, that's a place where there could be a lot of confusion. So the thing that I find missing here is before we go out for a proposal, I think we need to better define the goal of a comprehensive plan. What are we trying to accomplish? And I assume it's a plan to achieve the goal of development that satisfies the wishes of the town. Maybe it's guidelines for what sort of bylaws we work on. And, I mean, to me, we're missing the thesis statement here. And I think having, having that, a comprehensive plan for what? To accomplish what? And I think that we need to define that in clear words. And then that will help everybody. It'll, it'll help people decide whether or not they want to submit a proposal to us. Some may look at those goals and, and know that they don't align. So I, my impression on reading all this is that everybody thinks they know what this comprehensive plan is for. And, and my little warning flag is up. It's like, are we really on the same page there?
Right. And Anne had the same comment to me that Ray just made.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I trust, I trust Anne more than I trust me on that. So if, if, if she found that as a potential thing to, to, to clear up, then I, I'm reassured.
Chris, how much of a master comprehensive plan is dictated by the state?
That to have a certified plan, all of it.
In the past, in the past, I used to tell you the and et cetera. So I'm just wondering how, how much of a comprehensive plan is already outlined to us by the state? As part of Ray's question of what's the thesis here, I'm just wondering if there isn't some stuff that's already predetermined outside of our wish list.
There is. It, it's what they call elements. And the shortlist is housing, transportation, parks and recreation or open space is you, more usually the, the term, economic development and land use.
But those are all really cool things. But the comprehensive plan is to do what about those things? To achieve, I assume, the best form of those things for the town of West Newbury as determined by the residents of West Newbury. I assume that's what it is.
Right. So community engagement is key to all this. But out of that, you want to generate goals and objectives in each one of those elements. And then out of those goals and objectives, you then want to identify action items. Usually, short, medium, and long-term.
That.
High priority, low priority.
I, I, I love Rob's instinct here. And I think it, it lines with the, the Murphy principle. That, that where the language can align with what the state puts out there, the better off we are. But yeah, if, if, if we could start out with some sort of a little statement there at the beginning of this whole thing, then I, I think that would be better. And it sounds like you've already got a handle on it. You know, West Newbury in compliance with the state law requirements wants to create a comprehensive plan.
For the future.
To, to achieve desirable goals in the following areas, bullet, 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 bullet.
Yeah, that's, that's the gist of it. So, okay.
Yeah. And, and then, then suddenly saying scope of work and the approach and, and the tasks and all that stuff, that all makes a lot more sense to me now.
Okay.
Right. And again, to the question in the past, what we did was we did a comprehensive plan all at once. And therefore you had one vendor and that vendor, well, the, actually, the, we had to fire the first vendor and then go out and hire a second vendor to finish to produce it. But presuming that we avoid that this time around, I would still want to know how we would proceed through the comprehensive plan with some continuity if we happen to find the right person. Did Wendy drop off? Is she gone? I guess.
She's there.
I see Wendy read here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's no requirement that you have to change consultants. It'll be two separate RFPs and, you know.
And they're, they're not, they're not the, the lowest bidder RFPs?
No.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, the intent in splitting these two components apart is that we intend to seek grant funding for the primary comprehensive plan in the spring. Yeah.
Thank you. That, that just takes, because the, the, thank you. That, that clarifies that one issue. Good. Okay. So we've agreed that we're gonna take this up again. Probably at our next meeting, Chris?
Yes.
So if we do it the next meeting, can you pow-wow with Anne and perhaps take up Ray's point and, and Brian's point about the context or Anne's, Anne's certainly on board with that. Can, can you maybe figure out a way to work that into whatever it is we're gonna be discussing?
Yeah, I'll be speaking with Anne on all of that anyway. So I'll be sure to cover that. Have something for the next meeting.
Great. Wendy, thanks for clarifying that. Because I'm, I'm not, you know, I always get confused between the things you, how you procure stuff for the town.
Yeah, engineering services aren't, you don't have to follow the same guidelines like for water replacement.
We're making a building or something like that. Okay. So are we done with this one here?
Yep.
We are. Okay. Can we go on to stormwater regulations? Chris, you want to speak to stormwater regulations?
Well, this is another select board and town manager priority. And so it's something that I'll be working on. It's a planning department priority.
Right. Is there, is there, is there a working group that is currently working on these things?
There is, and there has been. And we have a consultant, Horsley Witten, who is available as a resource to work through all these things and give us recommendations. So the planning board has been the permitting authority, delegated that authority, as you know, to the Board of Health in the case of the stormwater regs. That's been working out fine. But there needs to be some updates. It's related to our, our DP general permit. You see a reference to that up top here. And all the other regulations need to be aligned better. There needs to be more consistency. I think an attempt was made at town meeting, last town meeting, to do that. But it was decided to put that off with all the, the big ticket items that were on the warrant. So we will be working on this in 2026 with Horsley Witten. They will have recommendations. And what I'd suggest is we have their, their project manager, Lori, attend the meeting on the eighteenth, November eighteenth, and she will give us a presentation on where things stand right now, what their efforts have been, and what they see the process as, as evolving into going forward. So she would be the best one to speak to all of this and, and why the planning board has it on their radar.
One aspect of this, though, is that most of the language is going to be done by the working group, isn't it?
Yes.
So basically, other than us just understanding what role we play in all this, this doesn't sound like it's much of a project for the members of the board.
No.
Good. Okay. Well, those are good projects. Anything else on stormwater regulations? And of course, Paul remains one of the key elements of the, the working group and, and the administration of this, correct?
Yes, he's on the working group. And, you know, there's town, town staff led by Angus on the working group. So we're managing the consultant, Horsley Witten. And they'll be providing recommendations, which you will get to review. But as you say, you know, we have the experts telling us this is probably what you need to make your life easier. And so that will be the, the right way to go.
Yeah. So anything else on this one item?
No.
Is Horsley going to provide the information for us to change the stormwater regs?
That's my understanding, isn't it, Chris?
That's my understanding, but I will have to see.
Yeah, no, we, we, that's what we've been told prior to this. We'll find out on the eighteenth. But, but we're not crafting this is, is, is my understanding. It will be crafted for us, presented to us so that we can, you know, take action on it.
Yeah, they're still evaluating our regulations in the context of the existing requirements or the current requirements by the feds, by the state and so forth. So they will have specific recommendations about what we do and don't need to change.
Right. Good?
Yep.
Cannabis zoning. So before we begin, I, I, I think sometimes we have to, like we've done in some of these other items. To, to me, when we discussed this before, we've got clearly an interest in a retail location in West Newbury. And, and then there's the aspect of cultivation, which isn't necessarily going to be related to the retail. And what I mean by that is you can end up with a retail location and can end up with a cultivation location. They can be operating in different districts and under different rules and regulations. Say, as Chris mentions, Sam is involved in this. And when I talked to Sam, he's pretty sure that the retail location aspects can be discussed. And, and he'd be glad to join in the discussion. The agricultural end of it, he's still researching. So he's, he's not quite clear how that may play out as it relates to our town and our, our zoning. So we may want to just give them, Sam and Chris, some direction about retail right now and wait for Sam to come back on cultivation. That, that's just a, an observation I have.
If I may.
Yes, of course.
I, I think, and, you know, I trust Sam to, to know a lot about this and what's been done in other towns and whatnot. So I put a lot of, of weight in what he says. But as far as I'm concerned, this is sort of a will of the town issue. Unless there's some strong external reason why we should do one thing or another. Because I can see how some people would say, it's just fine. Allow it in, you know, in the commercial district and off you go. And then agriculture is protected and that can go anywhere that somebody wants to do it.
Well, and then it may not be true that marijuana cultivation is agriculture, but the point of having it as a zoning measure is so that it is shown where it can go.
Yes, but I get, but coming back to my point here is that I think some. Yes, but I get, but coming back to my point here is that I think some people would be very willing to let it go anywhere, and some people will find it a danger and they would want to restrict the location a great deal. And I hesitate. Again, it unless there's some external precedent that Sam knows of, that's excellent guidelines for the town to adopt. I think this has to be a will of the town issue, meaning that we have to somehow get a do a survey or something and get the feeling for the what the town wants. I I I hesitate for the planning board to say we will allow this here. Trust us, we know what's best. Because I think there's going to be very strong feelings about this one way or the other.
Sounds like something that should come up at town meeting. Just asking the questions, should the town consider creating a district for the sale and or growing of marijuana?
I think that at at town meeting, I don't think it works that way. I think you have to have a a motion. And before you can have the discussion, so we would have to have a proposal before that, and I guess I what I'm suggesting is some sort of survey to guide the kind of motion. I mean, Angus here would like something by Springtown meeting, that I think is oh, 2020, yes, 2026. I think that's pretty ambitious. I'm 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 not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying. I again, if Sam knows based on what other communities have done, what works and doesn't work, then I can get behind it. But in the absence of that, I I
Okay, so so how about this, since cannabis zoning was one of the two things that Ann didn't want us to go too deep into. And since you're, it sounds like you would like to have Sam's opinion on this, could we, Chris, could we get Sam in to present why towns have found it beneficial to zone specifically for this activity, just like they zone specifically for numerous other activities?
I was gonna recommend that. I think he will need a little lead time. He's still
Yes.
to the Cannabis Commission and
No, he's 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 all, he's all set to speak to the retail end of it. Trust me.
Okay, well, then you can have one. I can invite him on any future planning board agenda.
I think it should, well, so what's the workload on, say, the 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 fourth as opposed to the 18th?
Not bad on either, so it's a good times to do this.
So Ray, would you mind if we tried to get Sam in at the earliest convenience?
No, I I I don't, I applaud that effort.
Right, thank you. I feel like you about Sam, I mean, and 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 he he speaks really well when you ask him about zoning and its uses, so I always enjoy.
Rob.
Yes.
Yeah. I had sent a note to Chris and I copied Ann. If I knew you were going to run the meeting, I would have copied you, but such is life. I was curious what a couple of our other local towns that do not have retail establishments have put in place being Newbury, Newport, Groveland, and Boxer. And I think Sam, you're right, I think Sam could probably speak to that. I I'm I am going to disagree with Ray. I I think if the town doesn't want it, they'll, they would vote this down. And I view it as just something that clarifies where in the business district, this is a business. Where in the business district, and maybe it's anywhere in the business district. But I'm particularly interested in why these other towns do not have retail establishments.
Don't have, don't have zoning or retail establishment?
Well, I'm not sure about the zoning.
Right.
I don't know and and whatnot. So and 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 as a follow up, Chris sent me a draft bylaw that apparently Sue Brown was working on, which was news to me. Because we, as a board, had decided not to pursue this. She may have been asked by Angus to start drafting something. I I don't recall it ever coming to the board. And I I I, you know, I started to read through it. It's 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 quite in depth. So it'll be interesting to see, again, Sam's opinion on that. It looked a little over the top to me. And again, so to to your point, let's get Sam in.
Yeah, let's get Sam in. Ray, what do you want to say?
Just real quick, I hear what you're saying, Brian, but you know, we allow businesses in residential districts through a special permit process. I'm not saying that's the right way to go with this, I don't know. But there might be people in favor of just adding it to the list of those things that are allowed in residential districts with a special permit. I doubt it. But yeah, so again, Sam's input.
Yeah, right, right. And 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 Anne's wishes to to continue this. I mean, this is going to be fascinating. You know, the issues that Ray brings up are ones that probably we should consider for everything. And then a lot of times what we do is we narrow back to the center anyway, so so it'll be interesting to see. I I would remind you that one of the reasons to get something in place is so you don't have unintended, whatever you get in place, the intent is to end up without unintended consequences. There are towns that have paid dearly for not zoning specific to something that then came in and was totally against their wishes. I can tell you some stories about them, so.
Yeah, we're always better being proactive than reactive.
Exactly, get in front of it. That's what Angus was telling us the other day, and I I think we're probably all going to end up in agreement of getting in front of it. The fun will be in describing what it is we think getting in front of it means.
No, no, the the fun will be bringing it to the town.
I don't.
Oh, it will be. It will be interesting.
It will be interesting. Yes, yes. Yes, and when it turns, yes, okay, so are we good on this one, Chris?
Yep.
So does this take us to the work plan?
It does.
So so I would say ahead of any discussion, we got, like Chris alluded to, we got a nice memo that called out the key items as the select board and the town manager saw. So I thought that was very helpful. Yes, thank you. You're getting right to it. Good, good man. So this could be the beginning of of the discussion of the work plan. I would presume that this one will need some further discussion as well. It's probably an ongoing discussion, as as Wendy will tell you that you set a plan and then you gotta kind of adjust to it to to things that come up. But anyways, Chris, why don't you take us through this?
Well, it's what we've been discussing in other areas on the agenda. The priorities going into 2026, it's the MBTA zoning, we've largely addressed that. Comprehensive planning, we've discussed, so you know, with the visioning process, getting a consultant on board, clarifying the entire process and visioning's role in that. That that will be the first order of business. And we talked about recreational cannabis. He uses the term recreational cannabis here, so. And then it goes to stormwater bylaws and regulations. Those are all the things we've been talking about previously on the agenda. This, the fifth one, zoning minutes for wireless communications facilities, I I have not been involved in any discussions on that, so that's new to me.
News to me too, so luckily Wendy is here to explain it.
I mean, we we asked, we did address relay towers, and we have a zoning bylaw in place for that.
Yeah, this is something separate. I think it's similar to cannabis, and that if we don't put the zoning in, then these things could go up anywhere essentially, or we have less control. This is, this was a conversation a couple of years ago. You don't remember that, Ray and Brian? I don't really know if it was.
Yeah, I remember Angus talking about some of the standards, the federal standards, maybe it changed. And, you know, we needed to relook at the bylaw.
Okay, so we do have a bylaw, correct?
We have a cell tower bylaw. Modern wireless communications, though.
Right, right, they 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 could go to telephone poles and all manner of stuff. So is that what this is coming from? So basically, this is like stormwater that 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 there's something there that we probably better get looking at, is the way I'll say it. Is that fair to say, Wendy?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the best way to go about this? Because quite honestly, something like this, well, again, maybe a Sam question. But, you know, isn't something like this like stormwater, can't this thing have moving parts that a local planning board wouldn't be aware of? I mean, my my understanding of of certain of the communication facilities is you 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 have to make provision, well, well, cell cell towers, you had to make provision for them. You couldn't say, we're not going to have any. So I'm wondering if this thing gets into the weeds like that. So I guess what we could do is see if Sam perhaps has some thoughts on this or what he's hearing, but.
Yeah, and the other thing is, I don't know, is there some legal consultant that
Well, that's, yeah.
that knows what the state is demanding of
Well, the beds, I think, mostly, yeah.
Well, they're they're going to throw out anything they had done two years ago, so who the hell knows?
No, yeah, so Wendy, yeah, that that was kind of where I was going, right, which is it seems to me like we may need not just Sam's input, but there may be someone else who deals in this area that might be helpful to us. Wendy, is that something that we should be thinking about as we take this up?
I don't know. I I think Angus is the better person to answer that question.
Good, good.
He has experience with this and helping the towns, yeah.
So maybe, so the way to go is, I think, what what we should consider is Chris can talk to Sam on this issue, Chris can talk to Angus. And maybe, Chris, you can do a recap for us, just like we kind of have, wanted to have an overview for the the comprehensive plan and and the the visioning, maybe, maybe this needs to have, be fleshed out so we can talk about it next meeting or the meeting after. Sometime in November, we should talk.
I know, and also if I, you know, if I'm jumping ahead, you know, we got the spreadsheet that I assume we're, the planning spreadsheet that we're going to be talking about. You know, these items can pop into that, they're not all of these things aren't listed there. And add a priority kind of column to all this stuff. I mean, it makes sense to me. I respect the select board's urgency on the issues that they've brought forward. But we also have other things that we've been talking about. And I think we need to kind of sort things into our our priorities.
Right, 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 right. But as a beginning point, we've been presented with stuff that that to my the way I see it, should be on the list, and then you're introducing the fact that there's going to be some other stuff. So again, to Anne's point, you know, we should look at this as the beginning discussion of something that will continue into next month.
Yeah, and and, yeah, and we need to know how deficient we are with this wireless communication stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I can also bring up something that we've talked about, but I don't know that we've ever gone anywhere with it, is the issue of lithium storage batteries that large scale places to store electricity are I I know that my church has been approached, and we have a company who has been exploring putting facilities in areas in town. I I don't know where the technology is at this point, but.
We we addressed the battery storage.
We passed that.
Yeah, we passed that.
We did, all right, then never mind.
Okay, but that that that's a little bit reminiscent of what Ray said, so we've got something in front of us to pay attention to. And then we've got to kind of scrub it. When we have Sam in, it would be prominent to ask him what's on the horizon or whether they discussion, because you know, he 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 basically serves as, I think, president of an organization that tries to stay ahead of a lot of these things, so.
Yeah, I've been impressed with his knowledge about what's going on statewide.
Exactly. So Chris, when he comes in, make sure that we're also asking him for anything else that we might be wanting to think about, if that's okay.
As in?
Excuse me?
As in? Like lithium storage batteries?
When Sam comes in, make sure we also ask for a State of the Union address from Sam. So that, so that, so.
About the stormwater and wireless, anything else? Cannabis?
Is he aware of anything going on in the nearby communities that should be on our radar that we we haven't thought of?
It's an opportunity for him to say, oh, yeah, you know what, you should be thinking about this. That's what we can ask him.
Chris, Chris, he brought to us the the concern about the battery storage facilities. And what Deb just mentioned, that was passed at Springtown meeting. And was it this year or was it last fall? I've lost track.
It was this year, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so he, I I don't think that was on any of our radar. Well, well, maybe Ray, maybe Ray.
And Deb. Deb's mentioned.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of of some sort of a bylaw or whatnot. So yeah, I think he did a pretty good job in putting the the facts together and and we got it passed.
So so we should take advantage of Sam being out there in the larger world, seeing stuff that maybe we haven't yet. He he doesn't know whether we've taken up or not. That's all, Chris. It's just a question for Sam.
Right.
You see?
Yeah, I guess, I guess a good place for the town to be, and our little portion of what that is, is, you know, to be aware what Angus sees and the and the select board sees priorities and and legal vulnerabilities and to see what Sam is going on. If we make life easier for the select board and the health, the Board of Health and 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 Angus and Sam, we're doing everybody a favor. And and the more we can work together, the better.
I I will say that there was some discussion recently at offline with MBPC that some towns have been surprised at the applications of these clean energy storage facilities. And it 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 was good to know that he was on top of it for us, and we we have something in place. And we'll we'll go from there, but it it's 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 very much a topic out there among the planning groups right now.
Thank you. That that is that widespread application in many communities. It's not a recent development. But you know.
And and I got to say, for the record, you know, and Chris may not be aware of this. I I realize that I'm going to hurt my arm patting patting myself on the back here, but we we were proactive on a wind turbine bylaw, we were proactive with cell tower stuff. We've been proactive on a whole bunch of things, and it's a good thing. And and again, the more we can stay, be in front of these things, the better off everybody is.
Right, and Sam certainly is a resource for knowing what's going on out there in general. So, Chris, we good on this item?
Yep.
Okay. As I mentioned, I was looking to take up Ann's request. Her email about the request from the town clerk report at special town meeting. You might recall, we did have a brief discussion that we would not specifically give a report. But we would be there to affirm our support for the Warren article related to MBTA. So I'm wondering how we want to respond to the town clerk.
Respond to what now?
The town clerk. There was an incentive.
Yeah, I mean, is, Chris, if you heard, I mean, does the select board or does Angus, do they want us to give a report?
They haven't. I'm not aware of it.
So I'll 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 answer that. And and I think I had some discussions where she did remind remind the select board that that they inquired of us whether we wanted to do a report or not. It's just a matter of the town clerk now wanting to get ducks in a row to know how many reports are going to be given. Our discussions were that we were very Um, our discussions were that we were very well pleased with Wendy's, uh, report. And thought that that would suffice and that we would, uh, just add our support.
Oh, well, I'm, all right, there's two issues. There's how we stand on MBTA, and then there's just overall a report from the.
Well, sure, but but, right, so, I mean, do you have anything overall that you wanna make a report on as a board? We haven't discussed anything.
Not me.
No.
Okay, so.
But if I, if I could just add, I mean, part of the zoning process is for the planning board to make a recommendation to town meeting. So have you, I mean, I I don't want to do anything that makes us noncompliant with this process.
Oh, is that, okay, because Ann, Anna thought that you had said something about would you rather than you must.
No, I think in chapter forty B, is that correct, Chris? Isn't that part of the zoning process?
Forty B?
Uh.
Forty A. It talks about the requirement for the planning board to hold a public hearing.
Right.
And then provide a recommendation to town meeting on all zoning articles.
So our recommendation is a five to zero vote to support. The 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 difference in my mind was between. Standing up and and making a report, which I think leads you to have. More time to speak. We're not looking for a lot of time to speak. My understanding was that what we had discussed, Wendy, and it may be wrong. Is that, you know, your presentation, which I consider a report. Uh, should suffice, and then what we discussed was just echoing your your presentation by saying we support this. Uh, uh, Warren article by unanimous vote, five to nothing. That's what we were talking about.
Yeah, if I can modify.
Go ahead.
A bit, Rob, I mean, the standard way that things things go is, uh, a motion, an article is read and then, uh. The town moderator says, what is the recommendation of the finance committee? And with this, the 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 moderator could also turn to the select board and could also turn to us. And, uh, and Ann or any of us could stand up and said, uh, the West Newbury Planning Board recommends adoption. Of this, uh, of this bylaw.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
That's what we discussed.
Yes.
That's what we discussed.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
In my experience, for what it's worth, uh, they're talking about two different things here. The report that goes with an article and the vote is different than reports that. Traditionally are covered in Article One, and they could be on anything, anything even unrelated to zoning.
Right.
So I believe from my reading, that's what she's referring to, Article One.
Right. So again, I'm gonna ask, so I I agree with you. That's exactly right. What we, Wendy, what we've discussed is not standing and explaining why this article should be supported.
Yeah, that's, you don't need to do that, but I think formally, the planning board needs to make a recommendation to town meeting. I think Ray did that at the Springtown meeting.
Yeah, 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 recommendation, yes, okay. Not a report, a recommendation.
That's not a report.
Recommendation. We intend to make a recommendation, yes.
Yes.
We don't intend to make a report.
Okay.
We're all agreed?
Yep.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. So language is a funny thing. Wendy, thank you. You're very helpful. I know you anyways, but.
If at any point during the discussion, uh, Wendy, um, you would find the input of the planning board helpful. Um, you know, I'm sure, uh, we'd be glad to stand up and, you know, and as far as I know, we're all supportive. So if somebody, if there's, if there's a citizen or a group of citizens at town meeting and they wanna, they wanna hear our point of view. I'm, uh, um, we'd be very happy to, uh.
Yeah.
To stand up.
And Casey, Casey does a good job of of triaging that. I mean, sometimes she knows that that it it it's really not leading to anything. Other times she knows, and she does a good job of glancing over to who she thinks might wanna take it up to see what their reaction is, so. I I think that'll be well in hand myself. I think that'll go well. I think Wendy's presentation is all that's needed, quite honestly. So are we good to go on?
Yeah.
Minutes?
No, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think we're done with the 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 planning spreadsheet. We we never looked at the. The ten twenty-one twenty-five spreadsheet, and and I have a comment on one of those items.
Okay, we you we can comment on it, but we're not gonna take it up as, uh, in a deep dive, because Ann's asked us not to.
Well.
Go ahead, Brian.
Can we pull the spreadsheet up?
Just give me a second, please.
Yeah.
There we go.
And just scroll down for the. The 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 planning.
There's a, there's a zoning section where I think these a lot of items we were talking about could be inserted.
Uh, let me see.
And there's a general bylaw section.
So I I think, you know, timing is everything. I think we 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 owe a relook. Using Chris, Chris's fresh eye at OSPD.
Yes, yes, of course.
Yes, I I think we do, and 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 one of the things I think we should consider, the last time we did it, which was six or seven years ago. More than that. We we did the cottage incentives.
Yes.
And I think we should be talking about an apartment incentive.
Sure.
Sounds good.
So I I I'm just, you know, uh, no deep dive. I think that should fall on some sort of a, you know.
Sure, so let's agree that that the next time we take it up, we'll look specifically at this list. Um, and and if there's anything that we're gonna grab as primary to us, we'll grab it.
Yeah, and that's another one, that's another one where you you wanna be earlier rather than later.
Absolutely.
Good ideas to implement.
Yeah, Brian, by by moving on, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to not look at this. I just thought that it would be better. To let Ann join us.
Yeah, she'll she'll see this when she hears the the meeting. Oh, good.
Very good, yes. She reacts very well to everything. So, permission of the board to move along?
Yep.
To minutes? I I did mention to Jen that we should at a minimum start seeing a set of minutes every meeting. At a minimum.
Two, until we get caught up.
Well, there there is that too, but I I I didn't wanna like. Overpressure, but yeah, you're great. We gotta get caught up. That's the, your point, yes, agreed. So as far as, as far as I know, the only thing I saw was that, uh, when I was talking about, is this the place where Milton was mentioned? Town of Milton? So within here, Chris, you you must know these by heart. Was this where we mentioned, uh, the town of Milton? I don't remember. Heard to as speaking to the town of Milton, well, the town of Milton.
Regarding.
People talking about Milton, they're talking about MBTA.
Right.
I I don't think there, we were talking MBTA on this meeting.
We were. We had, we had that there are, uh, so in that paragraph that starts off, Phillips noted.
Compliance, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So what what I would, Chris, what I would do is, I never said reluctant communities. I call them a recalcitrant. Well, I'd like to get that language in there. I use that word on purpose. Reluctant is too kind.
I will pass that along to Jen.
Okay, thank you. That's all I saw. Anything else? Do you wanna start at the beginning? I don't know how you guys like to do.
I I read through it. I had no problem with it, but, yeah.
I'll move. We accept the minutes with that change.
Well done.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Rick Cook on?
The panel tonight.
Brian Murphy, I.
Rob Phillips, I. Thank you. Brian, you're up next.
I'm up next. Where are we?
MVPC.
Oh, yes. Oh, sure, yeah. So I I attended, uh, the the recent meeting and, uh. Gerard Witten, the executive director, had a had a couple of interesting points. He recently attended a national conference of. Planning agencies. It was actually in Portland, Maine, so he said that the the drive was pretty easy. Um, and he said it was, it was really an outstanding gathering to to, uh. To hear viewpoints from various across the country, and some apparently are in rather tough fiscal situations. The way they, the other groups have structured their, their, uh, their grants and what their staffs work on. And he said it made him happy that in Massachusetts, there's been a recognition of the, uh. Reduction in federal monies, and Massachusetts has stepped up. Um, with, um, some additional funding, um, for, uh, climate. Mental elements that feds have backed away from. But he said even there, um, a recent application by MVPC for, uh, some economic development work. Um, was turned down. They decided not to fund, uh, so. And the 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 gist is everyone's feeling the pinch to some degree. He's very optimistic. That MVPC has an excellent team and they're they're, um, pursuing broad-based grants. Um, that have not only, um. Specific applications, but also can be used within their their teams, transportation and climate, um, and economic development. Um, and also that the federal spigot is not totally turned off, and and he says, yet. Um, so he he he's still fairly optimistic at this point. Um, and, uh, he has a very good group of people working, uh, with him, so. Voted to approve the, uh, Priority Growth Strategy Report, and I'll I'll be getting some information to Chris. So that a link can go on our website if somebody ever wants to look at that. And they did fix the verbiage and pictures that they used for West Newbury. That's it.
Very good. Anything else from anybody? We should remember Memmerack Valley Planning, uh, Commission as as one of our great resources.
Sure are.
And and so, uh, you know, we talked about Sam and whatnot, um, it it would. Perhaps be nice, Brian, to ask Gerard for a heads up as to what he sees on the horizon as well. Um, not that he knows everything about us, but but you know, you might just query him specifically. He might have a, oh, have you thought of?
Yep, yep, send him a note.
Yeah, thanks. Say hi.
And thanks to Evan. He's been a great help.
Oh, who's that?
The young man who has been.
Yeah, yeah, don't say it too loudly, though. He got angry at me for praising him too much, so I went over the top. Affordable Housing Trust update.
So we had a meeting on September tenth, and, um, we have small grants in the works. A couple of them, uh, sixty-six hundred dollars for one party who needed help with. Uh, duct insulation, et cetera. Uh, the Mullen report is, um, still in the works. We've got an engineer who is looking at, uh, wetlands to determine roadways and and. More, um, it's moving along. Um, the AFT now has about seven hundred and ten thousand dollars in our account. From CPC money and developer funds. Uh. We have, um, one, and it maybe it's sold by now. Wendy may know more about this than I do, but. Uh, we had a, uh, an affordable unit that was coming up for sale. Um, which that means it has to go through a lottery to find a buyer. Um, and, uh, it it was on daily drive, and I don't know whether it's sold yet, but. Um, local preference doesn't apply to resales. Um, so this is, um, up for, up for grabs. Um, the sale price originally was. In the two hundreds and the state okay to sale price of two hundred twenty-three this time around. Do you have anything to add?
Nope, I don't.
Okay, any further discussion on Housing Trust? So then on to CPC.
Uh, because of, uh, scheduling conflicts, uh, we haven't met this month, and and we're gonna meet, uh, next month at the regular time.
Okay, so I presume no further discussion unless, uh, what's the whole cycle there, um, on CPC? Um, we start now for next spring? Is is that what 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 happens? That's what it goes?
Yeah, there's no applications before us. There's, um, a discussion item about soldiers and sailors. That's gonna be on the next agenda, but there's not a formal application.
Well, not a lot of applications in front of you.
No.
But they probably start coming in like capital requests to in December or something?
No, I mean, it's been pretty slow. I mean, we have a very healthy balance, so, you know, we need to have some projects to use. Some good projects.
Yeah, right. They always have to be good projects. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, so I I bet there'll be a few.
Well, you know, and and in the spreadsheet there, there were a couple of projects that, you know. Might actually, in the spreadsheet of of our, you look, uh, surprised, Rob, in the spreadsheet of 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 Planning Board priorities. There were some things there where if somebody were to make an application to the CPC, it might, it might work out.
Okay. Like what?
Well, if you zoom down to projects. There you go, potential projects.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, where was it? Where was the accessible trail and, uh, pipe state? It's on there someplace.
Yeah, Mill Pond All-Access Trail.
There it is, Mill Pond All-Access Trail, and then I I could see Parks and Rec coming forward or something.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, it's right. Yeah.
I'm sure Wendy Angus volunteered, they might wanna say something about it and and, uh, but I I wonder whatever happened to the. The trail connecting. Um.
Yeah, Whitestone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder whatever happened to that. That can be future discussions.
Yeah, let's, yeah, so, yeah, so we'll we'll keep a prize, Ray. You'll keep a surprise. And and hopefully, there'll be some good stuff coming, like Wendy says. Uh, there was an update on the town manager, from the town manager on the pickleball court, which. Mostly seemed to me to be talking about it's in motion. Um, did anybody have any additional thoughts on that or? I mean, I mean, the whole thing about about moving forward was to get something started this fall, obviously. So it seems like that's in place.
My only question about this is, um, and I appreciate getting an update from Angus on all this. But, uh, it says, uh, in accordance with the planning board site plant plan approval, I mean, he got his site plan approval. I mean, I I don't know, he doesn't have to. Tell us stuff going forward, does he? I don't know, Brian. It it just struck me that that this memo sort of had a ring to it to my ear, that that he felt like he had to. Take to give us reports going forward, and I don't think.
Oh, oh, if you're saying, if you're, if you're saying, yeah, no, uh, we'll, we'll expect. Chris to be on top of everything that's going on in town, and he can let us know if there's anything we should know. How's that?
Oh, it's all, it's all fine. It's just I don't, I didn't want Angus to think that that we were still kinda.
I'm in green. I'm sorry, I'm I'm being obtuse. I'm in agreement. Uh, we we don't really need an update on everything that's going on in town. Even if it's the pickleball court.
And Angus has so much on his plate, I don't want him.
Yeah, and and it makes for a a long, uh, a a a long agenda, um. Yeah, and it makes for a long, a long agenda. Chris, so you're okay with keeping us posted on anything we need to be posted on?
Anything I know about?
Yes, good. So I take your point, Ray. I agree.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know, Chris, next time you're informally talking with Angus, you can let him know that we appreciate it and we welcome it if he wants to, but he doesn't have to keep sending us memos.
Right.
Okay. Deb, Tim, you all agree with that?
Yep.
Sounds good, Ray.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Ray. Good point. Then we go to the annual report, which I think has been crafted, and is it ready to go if the board agrees? Is that where we're at?
I've been working with Ann. It needs a few more tweaks. She identified some typos. One thing I don't think that is in there is the energy storage effort.
Oh, yeah.
Before.
You want to bring it up? You want to bring it up on the screen?
It's the last two pages of the packet.
This is an old version.
Oh, okay.
This is the older version, so the newer version is in your staff report, but it's got the floodplain bylaw. It's got the ADU thing. You did both of those last spring for town meeting, but I do not have the energy storage.
Okay, so the deadline is December 1st. So you and Ann can show us the, at our next meeting, you can send out what you proposed to submit to the town clerk.
Right.
Okay, does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Give a thumbs up.
Okay. And placement of items, I mean, we've already listed some. We don't have to revisit the ones that we already agreed to, do we, Chris? You're right, you're going to take them? Great. So is there anything, like, I think that the open space residential development is one that we should add as a discussion point, just to have, flesh it out a little bit and see where it does in fact fit into the rest of our priorities. Does that sound like a good thing to maybe put on the agenda for next meeting?
I think as part of reviewing all those work items.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but specifically, it's, I agree that we're going to review all of the items, but it seemed to me that Brian thought that this one was especially one that we could start having a separate discussion on. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe not. Maybe it should be just part of the larger priority discussion. Is that what you're saying, Ray?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, at this point in the game, I think we need to take a look at all these things. Set up priorities, and then we can start going in-depth.
Later on.
Revisions of the OSPD.
Okay. So it sounds to me as if we've already come up with some items for future planning board agendas, and no one else is offering right now at this time anything that's missing to go on to a future agenda. Is that correct? We're good? We're good with this item?
Yeah.
Is there any other items to take up? I don't, I'm not aware of any.
No.
Wendy, did you want to, anything that you want to say before we get to whether we're going to adjourn or not, or spend the whole night doing this, or what?
There's nothing on the agenda that I wish to speak to.
You want to speak, okay, so, so that would come under items not reasonably anticipated by a chair 48 hours in advance of meeting, so.
Which is a violation of open meeting law.
It isn't.
It is.
No, it isn't. The Attorney General actually says it on their website. It is not. Wendy?
I don't want to get into, I mean, this is, this is, you know, we've had legal advice on this item, so, but you guys do you.
Rob, just, I was pleasantly surprised to see that the town meeting is at the town annex.
Yay.
As opposed to the high school. So there you go.
It's because the volleyball team is in the championships, and they may have a game on November 3rd.
No kidding? Wow, okay. Wow. Go team.
We'll be fine in the annex.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Okay, so is there anything else, or is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Ray Cook, aye.
Debbie Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Rob Phillips, aye. Thank you very much.